Welcome, everybody.
Hold on. All right, try again.
Welcome, everybody, to the Franklin Planning Board October 6, 2025 meeting. This meeting is audio and video recorded on Zoom. And the Zoom caller number is 312-626-6799. Meeting number is 818-2049-2848. So our first item of business, if everybody can still hear me, is general business. If I can go to Amy for the introduction of Lena.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, we have our new Director of Planning and Community Development that's joining us. She wanted to introduce herself. Her name's Marina. That is going to be here, I believe, for long term. And would like to just kind of watch, learn how meetings are held, and meet the board.
Sorry, I mispronounced it.
That's okay.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
They won't hear you unless you go to the microphone. Sorry.
I'm a little bit short. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Marina Salaya. I am the new Director of Planning and Community Development, as Amy just said. And I'm excited to work with you all and get to know you and do our work to get Franklin moving forward. So I'm here at your disposal, whatever you need. Same addresses as all the other Franklin MA addresses. So if you ever need to reach out, please feel free to do so.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have another introduction, Amy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, to my right, this is Steve Lee. He is with Beta Group. He has replaced Gary James. Just here, first time that he's been here. He'll be our representative for the peer reviews. So turn it over to him, Mr. Chairman. Quick introduction.
Thank you, Amy. As everyone, you know, Amy just said, my name's Stephen Lee. I will be continuing the peer review services for Gary. I have, you know, about 14 years' experience doing civil site design. You know, a lot of 40B projects, you know, stuff like that. Everything from like, commercial to residential, retail, stuff like that. So I spend a lot of time having my plans reviewed. And so now, I'm working with the Beta Group on the other side now. So I'm looking forward to working with everyone here. And I appreciate the introduction. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
One more question is, would you guys like to introduce yourselves real quick?
No.
What? No? Yes?
Greg Rondo, Chairman.
Beth Worthing, I'm Vice Chairman for another couple of meetings, then my term is done, and you'll be getting a new member.
Jen Williams, Clerk, also only three this meeting and two more, and then my term is done. Bye. Because I do you all in last.
Jay Mello, I have two years left. And then I'm done.
Mark Mataroni, Associate Member.
Chris.
Hey, good evening, Chris Dickney. I also have two years left along with Jay.
Thank you, Chris. Nice place. All right, thank you, everybody. A second line of item would be a lot release for Depoto Drive. If I could put it in there, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this was, this is a very old subdivision known as Stony Brook Estates 2. They typically, they catch these when the house gets sold, that the lot wasn't released from the covenant. This subdivision is completely done. I think it goes back to 93. So the only way for the lot to be released is for the planning board to sign off on a lot release. So that's why they've applied for that.
This is very common, the other ones we've passed as well. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions? Chris, you're good. Okay. I make a motion to release Ford Depoto Drive for a lot release. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello, do I need to do a roll call?
Yep.
Yes. Chris Dickney.
Yes.
Jay Mello.
Yes.
Beth Worthing.
Yes.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams, yes.
Next item of business, this would be for meeting minutes from September 22, 2025. If anybody has any additions, deletions, if not, I make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September 22, 2025. Do I hear a second?
Second. Roll call, vote. Chris Dickney.
Yes.
Jay Mello.
Yes.
Beth Worthing.
Yes.
Greg Rondo.
Yes.
Jennifer Williams, yes.
Next item of business, this would be for, excuse me, 3 King Street Site Plan. This is a continuation of Tuesday's meeting. If I could go to Amy for a brief review, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since they were back before us about a month ago, they have submitted revised plans. The last, the last plan was more the concept plan for the traffic, the traffic flow. FIRE has reviewed it, and FIRE has provided a letter. There's two waivers they requested for the parking spaces and for the HDPE piping. If the board were to vote, those should be included in there. Beta has provided their letter with their review and the traffic. They did express some concerns about the grading in the parking lot more to the rear of the site. I did receive updated plans today, I was at Friday, updated plans today, addressing those issues. But they have not been provided to the board yet because they came in too late. And I do want to note, Mike Magliano was not able to attend the meeting tonight. However, he did provide a review letter on the sewer, the private sewer. And he is confident that that would work, that there's enough capacity for the private sewer. And I think we were all handed tonight a letter from the attorney as well, showing that agreement. But I have not had time to read it, honestly, because it just came in a few minutes ago. So that's also in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be important to read that letter into the record before we get started.
I was just gonna, before I go, I just want to have the applicant and his team just introduce themselves for the record first, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Edward Cannon, counsel for the applicant, Pat Magari for ownership, Joe Mallow from NEI Engineering, and Pat Dundor from VHB.
The letter we actually just received a few minutes ago, I'd like to have it read. Jen, if you could read it, please, for the record.
Sure. So this was a letter sent from Michael Merman. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but who's representing the Spruce Pond Village Condominium Association, sent to Mr. Edward Cannon, representing the applicant. It says, "Dear Attorney Cannon, my client, Spruce Pond Village Condominium Association, is not willing to allow your client to tie into sewer, into the sewer line located on their property. As you may know, Brian Hickox, President of the Spruce Pond Village Condominium Association, expressed concerns at the last planning board meeting about your client tying into the existing sewage disposal line, and suggested that the proposed residential project tie in directly to the street sewer. It appears from the plan you forwarded to me that both the gas station and pizza lots connect directly into the street service, not the Spruce Pond line. My client requests that your client do so as well. In the past, Spruce Pond Village Condominium Association incurred emergency sewage backups requiring jet spraying to clear their sewer line, which goes out to the street. In May of 2023 and following, the association paid for emergency clearing of the line, which was $7,000, after which the service provider reported that the blockage was caused by excessive grease buildup. The condominium association feels strongly that this strain on the sewage disposal line will only be increased by the addition of 30 units, and posed potential health-related issues to both the future occupants of your client's 30 new residential units and the owners of the 100 Spruce Pond Village condominium units who have already suffered inconveniences and incurred expenses due to conditions existing before the proposed tie-in. Mr. Hickox cannot attend tonight's planning board hearing due to a prior commitment. If he were present, he'd ask in the interest of the public health that the proposed residential project tie directly into the street in front of the project, as does the gas station and pizza lot. Please make the planning board aware of my client's position where this matter comes up for discussion at tonight's hearing. Thank you for your cooperation. Sign, Michael Merman."
Mr. Chairman, would you like to read Town Engineers?
Yep.
I don't have the answer.
That's, this is a letter from Town Engineer Mike Magliano, addressing the sewer as well.
He says, "We review the most recent materials for the subject project and offer the following comments. The development proposes to connect to the town sewer system through an existing private sewer main that serves the adjacent commercial properties as well as the Spruce Pond condominiums. Questions related to this proposed connection were brought up at a previous meeting specifically related to the capacity of the existing pipe and the legal authority to connect to it as opposed to connecting to the town's system within King Street. The applicant has since submitted an analysis of the existing private main and has shown that the existing sewer main has sufficient capacity to handle the additional flows from the proposed development. We've reviewed that analysis and do not have any concerns regarding capacity. The applicant has also indicated that their attorney will soon be submitting documentation showing that they have the legal right to connect to the private sewer main."
Thank you, Jen. Before we go into the sewer situation, I just want to go to Steve for Beta, just as a quick review, because I believe we checked most of the boxes at the foundation stage unless we retain them, we can't wait until today, but then we'll put that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so we issued our responses on September 30. The applicant has since, we got it earlier today, they've provided comments to almost all of our, our comments. I haven't been able to check. I've basically been able to review their comments. I haven't looked at the supporting materials as of yet. As Amy had mentioned, a lot of our comments did revolve around the grading of the site. But I will say that in their responses, they, they have addressed them. You know, one of them being, the parking lot was at 8%, you know. And they, they have brought it down to 7%, which is, in our comment, or this is comment T4, we mentioned mass DOT guidance for a bus or a large vehicle using a roadway should not exceed 7%. So they were able to meet that. Generally, a slow, steep slope like that in a parking lot isn't something that would put a stop to a project. It's just something that ideally you'd like to have it a little less. We understand that the, that the site is challenging and it presents those challenges, you know. So there were also several comments regarding sidewalks being non-ADA. Many of those were addressed, making them accessible. You know, as they were designed in the first go-around, they were designed as ramps or in excess of 5%, excess of 5%. They've now brought them down to 5%. So a lot of our grading, and there was also an area where we thought it was a little flat. It was at a half percent. And they revised it to 1%, which is pretty standard. So a lot of their grading, our grading concerns have been addressed in this. I will just say, in this response letter, we did provide extra comments, traffic-based comments, that were not included in this. I didn't know if maybe they would be followed up with a supplemental response memo. But aside from that, a lot, all of their, their responses address our concerns. And again, a lot of them being grading on the site. So there were some minor things with the infiltration rate. They provided a mounting analysis. They provided an updated mounting analysis that, that, that works. Again, I have to, I should say, they say that they provided it. Tomorrow, I will be reviewing these materials and will issue our final report stating that these items were taken care of. But yeah, they, they addressed the majority of the comments that we had, especially the ADA ones.
Good, thank you. Maybe I'll just go to the applicant first, before I go to the rest of the board. Are you comfortable with the last series of changes, adoptions, and whatnot through Beta? Do you think you can be able to work your way through the last loose items, I guess I should say?
Yeah, so I apologize. Thank you, Steve, greatly for, I know we sent it over early this morning. There was, you know, obviously, we got them last week, so there was a little rush on that. So I apologize for the, the late turnaround on that. In the email, there should be separate, not associated with my response to comments, just due to some of the attachments. But there should be a traffic response to comments from Patrick as well. So I believe we addressed, you know, everything. I think, Steve, you had some, some good comments on the grading. I think we've made some, you know, some improvements that, I said seven to be conservative, but I tried it, six and a half is kind of the slope across the, especially the rear parking lot that I kind of held. And then up, up along the parking spaces adjacent to the building, those are all at 2% to keep those ADA compliant. And then as we kind of get back towards that dumpster area, it kind of drops off, and that's where it steepens up to that six and a half. So, you know, we made a strong effort to make sure we, we responded and made the adjustments so we could satisfy all of Beta's comments. And then we shifted the retaining wall over. I think the retaining wall, once we get, hopefully through the, get the project approved, then we'll go through and do that, the retaining wall design exercise. And obviously, with that, we would take into account safety and the surcharge loading from the vehicles parked above. So that would be all incorporated into that design. We just haven't got that far into detail in design yet. And then, yeah, we've been in correspondence, like Jennifer read, from the Town Engineer and the DPW about the sewer. So, you know, whether it's a connection in King Street or to the sewer lateral that we have proposed on the plan, there is no capacity concerns with that.
So what I'm hoping we can do tonight is, we have VHB here, we know the board did have some concerns about traffic, so they can go through that. The, some of the sewer issues that just came up at the last minute. So I, I had one conversation with the attorney for Spruce Pond. That letter I got about an hour before I came here, just because we haven't had a chance to have a conversation. No problem, we can do a lateral right out to King Street, we don't need to do that tie-in. I haven't had a chance to have that conversation, but that's not a problem. So we are gonna ask to continue to the next meeting. We were hopeful coming in that we could resolve the issues and we could ask to close, but we're not there. That also gives Beta time to sort of complete the review and not do it so rushed. So if we may, if we could have VHB sort of go over some of that, and then the sewer, we're prepared to address. But we just, we could probably do that at the next meeting with a different design to go right out to King Street to address the concerns that the condo folks have raised.
Good. So if you want to do a brief review of the traffic analysis?
Yeah. Sure.
Good evening, my name's Patrick Dunford. I'm a transportation engineer with VHB. I believe the board's in the receipt of our initial study, which was September 16 of this year, kind of piggybacking upon some prior studies that were done in the area for a warehouse project, a daycare along Union Street. Focus of our study, given the size, was making sure that the site access would be safe and efficient and that the internal operations of the site would be efficient, which they've certainly done that through the civil engineering design. We also reviewed the parking adequacy as part of that. First and foremost, in doing this type of exercise, we estimate the amount of traffic that would be generated. And generally speaking, during the peak times of day, which are the concerns along King Street with the existing traffic, it's your mornings between 7:00 and 9:00, evening between 4:00 and 6:00, Saturday around lunchtime. This project, during those particular time periods, would generate 24 trips in the morning, 22 in the evening, 15 on a Saturday. So about one car either coming in and out of the site every three minutes. I can say, as a professional with experience in these matters, that level of traffic generation is not going to have a noticeable impact on the surrounding roadways. Regardless, we still went through the exercise of doing analysis focusing on the traffic signal to make sure we wouldn't be creating any problems there. Long and short of it was, there would be a negligible impact to the signal, which I can certainly talk about more if needed. And as far as the site goes, removing one of the existing curb cuts along King Street, that's going to help eliminate some conflicts along the roadway, potential for accidents at certain locations by consolidating the driveways, which is a great practice, and it's been done properly on the site plans. So as the site has been laid out, very safe and efficient type of design you'd expect for residential, taking advantage of the existing curb cuts, so all the traffic isn't coming in and out at any one point. There's multiple ways of this traffic dissipating quickly and efficiently, which is good. And as I had mentioned, no notable off-site impacts anticipated because of that low traffic generation. We also took a look at the parking supply versus the expected demand and found whether you base it on the number of bedrooms or the number of units, you still have more than enough parking with the supply proposed versus the estimated demand. So with all of that, that was summarized in our first study. There were the follow-up comments from Beta that were just mentioned, primarily looking for backup for some of the traffic count data, which we used, which we've since provided and haven't had a chance to review yet. And also some discussion of how we use that data. And to be clear, this wasn't intended as a full traffic study, and that's because the size of this project, it's more appropriate to look at the access points, make sure everything's safe, and not a big regional impact study. So with that, we did provide responses and backup data for that, which we're happy to talk about after he's reviewed it. But otherwise... But otherwise, I personally don't have any concerns with the project and think it's a good design. Thank you.
Before I go to the audience, I'll go to the board first. I'll start with Jay. Jay, any comments, questions?
I got nothing.
Mark? No comments, I will sit.
No, just providing the additional comments for the traffic. Providing answers to those, I think, will be helpful for us to, to review, especially, I think, comment T8. Is one that is something I'd like to see answered to you.
The fact that the volumes are projected not up to 2025, but they were instead projected to 2022?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could speak to that briefly if it would help.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so again, this was not intended as a full traffic impact and access study. We're focusing on really the key issues of the site and the nominal traffic generation. Simply put, we took advantage of the fact that there were recent studies done out here. The base traffic counts for those were originally done and then used in the subsequent daycare study in 2022. What we're focusing on is not the exact street volume, which is gonna vary from day to day and likely has grown since 2022. We're looking at the difference once we add our traffic onto it, whether those are 2025 volumes, 2022, or the 2029 that we used in our study. Which ma, whichever base year you're using, you're still only adding, I think I just said it was 15 to 24 peak hour trips. So I wasn't so much concerned with the base year volumes used as the negligible difference between the two. So because of that, we just focused on the incremental difference, which we found to be negligible, both in terms of the number of trips and their impact on the signal. And there's a more hopefully elaborate and easy-to-follow explanation in the letter.
Chris, thank you.
Just also the clarification of T9, since you're looking at access points. The speed used for site distance analysis, is that measured speed, is it posted speed?
Posted speed limits on King Street, 35, and Union Street of 30 miles an hour. We did not do any new traffic counting or speed measurements as part of the study. The one thing, just from being in the area and knowing that location, the signal does tend to, the signals tend to knock the traffic speed down a little bit. That's not the intent of them, but it does control it somewhat. So just driving this, and I think there's also a school zone to the northeast. I didn't see speeds as being excessive in the area, so because of that, we just relied upon the posted speed limits.
Just since this has been in front of us for quite a while, and quite frankly, I just need to be reminded through the chair. Just clarifying, this is all owner-occupied units, right? Condominium?
Condominium.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick comments. I think Mr. Cannon had highlighted, but I think moving forward with the direct access to King Street on the sewer is the better way to go, you're gonna piece the butters. And I think you're also gonna eliminate any potential concerns down the road if there's issues with that private access. And then secondarily, I believe I mentioned prior, but I just wanted to make sure again that it's out there that, understanding that all these properties now are under common ownership, but in the future, that may not be the case, particularly with the condominium association stepping in. So just ensuring that there are some type of reciprocal easement agreements or access agreements in place that protect the drive lines as have been proposed here perpetuity. I think eliminating the curb cut makes a ton of sense and that the planned access points alleviate my concerns that I had prior. So those are all my comments. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chris. I only, I only had two, two quick comments. Retaining wall, approximate height?
Excuse me, maximum of four, and then it tapers down to two, and then at the end, down the transformer, it's gonna be flush.
If it was gonna creep up any high, I was gonna look for some backup for it. We've been having a lot of sites that require retaining walls, so that being said, we're, I think, okay. But it'll still be submitted.
It will still be submitted, yeah.
Yeah, anything of taller substance, we wanna see it actually by the site. And the only other question I actually had is, and I just caught this earlier today, dumpster enclosure was a wood slat. I'd like to see if we can just make that black chain link, so it's for durability purposes. Snowflowers, cars, dumpster trucks, they have to tend to wipe them out. Just if they can make that just a black chain link, I think that'll service the site. You don't have to be fussy on it like they're doing this.
Absolutely.
And I think the sewer, I think you guys are gonna be able to work on the sewer, but I'm comfortable with that. And what I'd like to do is, I'll just go to the audience. I know there's a couple people here. If anybody has any questions or comments, just approach the mic if you have anything. If not, is this solely with regard to the traffic matter or all matters? I'll, I'll have. Like, so just introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Brian Hickox, 68, Bay Area Common. I represent Spruce Pond Village Condominium Association, and I was able to attend this evening, adjusted the schedule, so sorry for the letter. But I think that got pretty much to the point right from the beginning. So notwithstanding the capacity ratings of the sewer system, and this is our primary concern, we're not here to oppose each and every one of these points. It's solely a matter of public health. In, in this particular situation, while the town engineer may have examined capacity, the town engineer may not have been aware of the failure of the system that we needed to have remedied within the private section. As a matter of fact, it was the section from our first unit that is closest to the street, to the street, that once it was jet sprayed and cleared, they pulled out an enormous amount of grease from that section. By the way, the café which goes into that private section, it was in between that and the street where all this grease accumulated. So while the engineer may know capacity, of course, may not have known the substance that was going through those lines that caused the failure. So on one hand, we can see what the, any increased flow might present. However, with the variability of that grease coming from potentially the café, that's, that's our concern. So I understand this evening that the applicant has expressed willingness to a direct tie-in to the street. And, and you know, based upon that, that would eliminate the concerns on the sewage that we might have.
It sounds as if they're willing to go down that road. I'm sure they're gonna do a little more on it, but I don't think that would be an issue.
Sure, no, so, so thank you for that. One last question that arose. I heard the comment here with regard to the 30 units, that they are owner-occupied units. Is that correct? Has that been validated? Is there any prohibition of those units to not be, become long-term leases? In other words, one entity buying all 30 and renting it out as an apartment complex?
There's no intention. Put that in the condominium documents.
And so eliminating Airbnb's, VRBOs, and long-term leases, that they would be solely owner-occupied, 100%? That's, that's all my question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing. You had dedicated three accordables for this, this wall, right?
We did.
Okay. And that, that inclusive was.
You know, I would still like to be able to ensure that they go to someone in the town of Franklin. I, I know that everybody's gonna look at, you can't do that.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we can't, you need to speak into the microphone.
Could you put in the housing lottery?
Yeah. I would love to have three units go to possibly firemen, policemen, teachers, people that work in the municipality and people that have been here. But the state law doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
So I, I believe you might wanna check with someone in the town, because you might be able to put them directly in the town's housing lottery, and those are entirely separate units.
Well, if someone can guide us in that direction, I would much rather do that. Because there are, there are certain businesses in the, in the city of Boston, real estate businesses that focus on this. And they have their own group of people that they're able to slip right in. And I would like to avoid that, if it's possible. If there's someone in the town that can work with us and make sure that people in the town end up there, that would be, that would be my goal.
I believe we've done it with like a first right refusal based on them being eligible going to Franklin residents first, yes.
Yeah, I've talked to other developers when they tell me that, yes, everybody thinks that's the way it goes, but there are real estate companies in the city that focus just on this. And they seem to be able to have the inside track to get their people approved.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask quickly?
If there's someone that can help us out with that, that would, that would be great.
I know Maxine Huzan is our resident housing expert. Is that something she would be able to comment on for us, or for you?
Yeah, I, I could, I could add on, and even Marana could too. We just, we actually, this just came up recently. The housing, when, when they apply to the state to put in for the lottery, they can put in that they want 70% to priority of Franklin residents. And that, and we just had one come through across the street for their, for their rentals that they, they are putting a 70% priority on. We have it over as well as at Franklin Ridge for that as well. So that, that process happens when the building gets built and they apply through the state for the affordable housing. And they can put a priority on it.
So, so Mr. Marguerite should reach out to you to work through that?
Yeah, yeah, our department.
Or your, yep, great.
Yes.
So just reach out to the planning department.
It will be, if, if he doesn't own it, the developer's gonna have to at some point, and that's when we deal with the developer, and, and that, that's how the process will go. So it's not predicted at this point to the planning board, but it will be, it will be once the units are built.
When that process occurs, he can work with you to make sure that happens.
Yes, definitely.
There you go.
There you go. That'll help, that'll help the process.
Sure.
I just wanna make one last note. There was a memo from the Fight Department dated July 31st, 2025, and they were just basically saying that the claim was altered to eliminate one main entrance of the project and Jana was able to furnish the truck turning radius. So Fight Department access is, is comfortable with what they have. So just wanna make sure that, that I'll leave it for record as well.
It's a no.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions? No, so make a motion. No, I'm continuing. So I wanna make a motion to continue to.
October 20th would be the next meeting.
Right here's the second.
Second, roll call. Chris Dickney?
Yes.
Jay Mello?
Yes.
Beth Worley?
Yes.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jennifer Williams, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Good night, appreciate it.
Excuse me, gentlemen, can you just take that aside? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so I just want to let you know, one of our very longtime employees will be retiring on Wednesday, Maxine. She's been a wonderful help to us, to the planning board, to the town, all the years that she's dedicated from the town administrator's office down through passports, down through design review, planning board, and everything else she has on her plate. And I just want to wish her the best of luck and thank you for all her support, her help, her hard work that she's spent for the town.
Thank you, Amy.
The town will miss you, Maxine.
Yeah, congrats, Max, that's awesome.
Maxine, thank you very much for all your hard work, we all appreciate it. You make it easy, so you're gonna join the next meeting just to like get us through, right?
Maxine, thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate you.
And enjoy your retirement.
Just add that Maxine is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to housing. And having worked with her since 2007, Maxine, that wealth of knowledge will be hard to replace. And thank you for all you've done for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maxine. So any other questions, comments? Chris, you're all set?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Chris Dickney?
With the sigh, Jen, really? Yes.
I know, I should be pumped, it's before 8 o'clock. Jay Mello?
Yes.
Beth Worley?
Yes.
Greg Rondo?
Yes.
Jen Williams, yes.